From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors Meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Chuckston Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors Meeting will convene momentarily.
Good morning, everybody. Board reconvene. Matt Clark, please call a roll.
Supervisor Gleason.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggert.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here.
Okay, we're gonna start off this morning's meeting with a salute to the flag led by Mr. John Nylon. Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or meditation.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and to the audience, as we stand to salute the flag today, we will always be remembering the Erskine Fire and those who have lost so much, and it is a statement to this country as we pledge allegiance that we are strong, we are Kern County strong, and we will do all that we can as a united group to face this fire and what we need to do to help the individuals who suffered so much. So please join me in saluting the flag of the United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, John. I'd like to read a prepared statement. This county regarding the Erskine Fire, this county is deploying all of its resources to gain control of the Erskine Fire near Lake Isabella and to help victims of a fire to deal with the devastating loss of life and property caused by this terrible disaster. I'm very proud of the strength and breadth of the county's response, which shows the importance of teamwork and the value of every department to the public. Kern County firefighters and sheriff's officers have protected residents from harm and are battling the destructive and fast-moving fire. The county's mental health evaluation teams are in place. Our aging adult services staff are in place, seeing to the material and emotional needs of the survivors, many of whom have lost everything. So many of the places that were destroyed in the fire were homes to animals, and our animal services staff are caring for these survivors and working to find homes for them. These are just a few of the many services that Kern County is deploying today. The Erskine Fire has been a most humbling experience. It is a reminder that while some of us are fortunate to live near the beauty in nature, in an instant, nature can rear its ugly head and show its other face, sending us the most destructive fire in the history of Kern County. It was humbling to witness the courage of our first responders as they risked their lives to keep people safe from this inferno. And it has been hot-wrenching to hear people's stories of personal loss, each of which is a tragedy in itself. We hope to have the fire under control soon, and we will continue the long and painful process of helping our residents put their lives back together in the wake of this tragedy. Following that, we're gonna go to the consent agenda. And all items listed with a CA, you can get the agenda packets in the back of the room on the tables. All items listed with a CA above the item number are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion if no member of the board or audience wishes to comment or ask question. If comment or discussion is desired by anybody, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered in this listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. So I'm gonna go through the agenda items. Page one, number one. Page two, numbers two and three, under appointments, seven through nine. Under departmental requests, aging and adult services, number 12. Agriculture and measurement standards, thirteen through sixteen. Airports, seventeen, eighteen through twenty-one. Animal services, twenty-two through twenty-four. District Attorney, twenty-five and twenty-six. Employees' training resource, twenty-seven to twenty-eight. Fire Department, twenty-nine and thirty. Human Services, thirty-one through forty-five. Kern Medical, forty-seven through forty-nine. Fifty through fifty-five. Mental Health Services, fifty-six through sixty. Pox and Recs, sixty-one through sixty-three. Probation, sixty-four through sixty-seven. Public Health Services, sixty-eight through seventy-one. Sheriff's Department, seventy-two through seventy-seven and seventy-nine. And I think that's it. That's our consent agenda. Anybody in the public wishing to pull any of these items off the consent agenda? Now's the time. Okay, seeing none, let me bring it back to the board.
Motion, no consent.
Second.
Please cast your votes. Okay, we're gonna-
Motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna shuffle things up a little bit because we got a fire chief here, and he's got a job to do, so we wanna get him outta here quick. And we're gonna move to items, well, we're gonna move to a non-agenda item, and so first I need to post it on the agenda by taking a vote. For the people in the audience who wish to follow along, there are packets in the back of the room with the yellow thing on it. That's what we're talking about right now.
Motion to approve, to add to the agenda items, thirty A, B, and C.
Thank you, sir. Can we, I just have to, before we do that, we have a motion. I'm glad to hear it. Now let me read it, and then we'll go to a second. The motion is to consider non-agenda items, number thirty A, B, and C. Government Code, Section 54954.2-1 provides that legislative body may consider non-agenda items when the legislative body finds by a majority vote that an emergency situation exists. An emergency situation includes activity that severely impacts public health, safety, or both. On June 23rd, 2016, at 10:19 PM, the county administrative officer in consulting with the fire chief proclaimed a local emergency due to the impact of the Erskine Fire that began on June 23rd, 2016. The Erskine Fire created conditions of extreme peril to the safety of persons and property in the Lake Isabella area that necessitated emergency response beyond normal capabilities of the local agencies. The declaration of the local emergency grants extraordinary response authority, waives specific processes to allow expeditious response to protect life and property is a prerequisite to request a gubernatorial proclamation of a state of emergency for Kern County to authorize provision of state resources and potential authorization of a cost sharing under the California Disaster Assistance Act, making, make finding that an emergency situation as defined in Government Code, Section 54956-dash-dot-5-alpha, exists and the need to take action on the non-agenda items occurred after the agenda was posted. We have a motion. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you. So that's gonna take us to item, which's not on the agenda, but it's on this yellow thing, item thirty alpha, which is a request for resolution ratifying proclamation that a fire disaster and a state of emergency exists within the county of Kern due to the effects of the Erskine Fire near Lake Isabella. Chief.
Chairman Gleason, members of the board, good morning. Yes, this item is to request to ratify a proclamation of a local emergency. And as your fire chief, there is no doubt in my mind that we have a major emergency, a natural disaster occurring in the Kern River Valley today. When the fire first broke shortly before four o'clock last Thursday, the weather conditions, the fuel conditions were extreme. As we enter our fifth year of drought, tree mortality, wildfire season in California and Kern County is extreme. The fire broke, as I said, shortly before four o'clock in the afternoon. As units responded from the Lake Isabella Fire Station, they saw smoke showing from the station, and when they arrived on scene, they engaged the fire with everything they had. We were joined on scene with firefighters from the Sequoia National Forest and the Bureau of Land Management. Resources from the Kern County Fire Department were responding from all over Kern County. But with winds in excess of 20 miles an hour gusting to 35, the fire exploded. Within minutes, it was over 200 acres, over Cook's Peak, and pushing into our communities. Firefighters engaged in that firefighting effort and called for more assistance. Firefighters were requested from throughout the state of California. The Kern County Fire Department went into unified command with the Bureau of Land Management and other agencies. The Sheriff's Department was requested for evacuations. The Ready Kern System, which is our reverse 911 system, was activated. We began evacuating communities. Firefighters were engaged in structure protection and saving people's lives. The Sheriff's Department was going door-to-door evacuating people. The fire continued to run through our communities at an explosive rate. The wind was pushing embers out in front of the fire, causing the fire front to expand. The fire moved that night over 11 miles, and it destroyed everything in its path. Over 250 homes today have been destroyed. Nearly 100 homes damaged. Two people lost their lives. This is a fire that is going to go down as one of the most destructive in Kern County's I'm going to give you the current statistics on what the fire is and where it's at. Forty-six thousand 679 acres are totally destroyed, and the fire is only 45% contained. It continues to burn in the Paiute Mountains, south of the Kern River Valley. Fire crews are using air tankers, helicopters, and ground crews to put in control lines. These control lines are absolutely critical to keeping the fire out of the Erskine Creek drainage. With the right winds and the fire in Erskine Creek, over 25 homes in the Lake Isabella and Bodfish area would be threatened within hours. The fire is being managed in unified command currently with a Type 1 Incident Management Team, the Kern County Fire Department, and the Kern County Sheriff's Department. As I said, 257 structures have been totally destroyed, and if you've been in the area or have seen the news coverage, there's nothing left. Two fatalities, people that were caught in the fire front. Three firefighters have been injured. Three Kern County firefighters have been injured. During the firefight the first night, we had to fly two firefighters out of the area. They were overcome with smoke and heat and had to be transported to the hospital when additional Kern County firefighter was injured. But I'm happy to say they've all been released from the hospital and should be back to work shortly. We continue to work on the fire, but weather conditions are not favorable today and tomorrow. Dry lightning is expected, a 20% chance of thunderstorms. Thunderstorms create strong erratic winds which could push this fire in new directions, and additional firefighters, or fires could be ignited. If you think back to 2011, a lightning storm came through Kern County, and over 50 fires were burning at once. We hope to have the fire controlled within the next week. But again, the weather is one of the largest factors in controlling that fire, but also the steep rugged terrain and temperatures over 100 degrees that our firefighters are working in. To date, this fire has cost $13 million to extinguish. That is not even including the cost of all the support agencies. This is just firefighting cost, and it does not count the damage that our Kern River Valley communities have sustained. At this time, there's over 1,800 firefighters on scene, working 24 hours a day to control this fire. I can tell you that this is the precursor to fire season. Usually in mid-May, we declare the opening of fire season. We're six weeks into it, and this fire, if it's anything like what is to occur, it is going to be devastating throughout Kern County. There are nearly two dozen communities where this same fire could have been repeated. Kernville, Tehachpah, Stallion Springs, Bear Valley, Fraser Park, Pine Mountain Club. All of these communities are threatened by wildfire. And again, the conditions in California right now and in Kern County with the drought, the tree mortality, this could play over and over again. Where we're at today is, at nine o'clock this morning, we opened our Transitional Center, and that's to begin work on getting people back into the evacuated areas. Yesterday, we did release some evacuation areas in the lower end of the communities that did not have direct fire. There were no structures damaged. The Transitional Center will meet with people who are evacuated, and we will begin the repopulation process. It is a very dangerous area. Power lines have been downed. Trees have been burned and falling, and the homes that have been burned are almost a toxic area with asbestos, the chemicals that may have been in the garage that have been burned and mixed. There's sharp metal. It's a very, very dangerous area, and that's why we've made sure that we've made the area safe before we repopulate. Plus, our firefighters have been working in there, containing and controlling the hotspots. This has truly been a team effort. Public health is helping us immensely with making sure it's safe for the people to go back in, and I can't say enough for the human services, Red Cross, animal control, aging and adult services, and all the other county agencies that have been in the Kern River Valley, helping with our evacuees. Again, we'll continue to work on the fire. We'll continue to work with repopulation, but this is going to be a long-term recovery for the Kern River Valley. The infrastructure damage will be in the millions, private sector losses into the millions. This is going to be a long recovery process. This is the first step with this emergency proclamation, because now we can ask the state for California disaster assistance to help out with our recovery, our firefighting efforts, and try to get our communities back to where they were. We continue to perform damage assessment and search the areas to make sure that no one else lost their life in this explosive wildland fire. As we complete the disaster assessment, we'll have a report, and then we'll be able to put together a request to the state for assistance. We wanna make sure we are very thorough in that report so we can go to the state of California and ask for the assistance that we need here in Kern County. I can tell you that I just wanted to publicly thank the Sheriff's Department and all of our firefighters who were on the front line that night. It was conditions that are indescribable, the fire burning through the communities. And I would like to conclude with one last story. We had a firefighter respond from the Ridgecrest Fire Station to protect homes in the Kern River Valley as part of an engine strike team, and while he was fighting that fire, his house burned to the ground. There's also been three Sequoia National Forest firefighters, they lost their homes, and one California Highway Patrol officer lost their homes. And so many of our residents lost their homes or have received damage. Therefore, it is recommended that your board adopt a resolution ratifying a local emergency proclamation issued by the county administrative officer on June 24th, 2016, and authorize staff to submit a request for assistance under the California Disaster Assistance Act and other assistance as may be appropriate. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions your board may have.
Thanks, chief. Before we get to the board, I'll open it up for public comment. Is there anybody in the public who has a question or a comment about this particular Thank you. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for comments and considerations, and let me kick it off, because it is my district. Couple things I wanna talk about, and then I want you to jump in, chief, and help us out with, so we have a clear, more clear understanding. First thing, and right now, I think, is one of the most critical things, is that I want everybody to know that Congressman McCarthy, Senator Fuller, Assemblyman Mathis, and I and you toured the affected areas and got a more complete appreciation of the devastation and the horror that occurred in the past couple days since Thursday. And so the reason I'm saying that is, people need to be aware, is that we're getting full support from the state of California. We also met with the Director of California OES yesterday, was that yesterday or the day before? Was it one of the days? We met, and he flew in, and first words out of his mouth to me were, "We're going to support you. What do you need? Count on it. You got it." So in terms of finances, support, and the focus of this nation, we've got it. Congressman McCarthy also assured us that after the proclamations of disaster go their full route through to the governor of California, that's when he's gonna jump in and make sure that our national government also receives a full and complete understanding of the devastation that's occurred there. And I said to him, I said, you know, and I said this to the Director of OES, "They use numbers. They measure numbers to rank your devastation." And so sometimes, like, a number might be 950 homes destroyed qualifies you for this type of level of financial support and aid from FEMA or whatever it is. I wanna make sure that he understands, he's gotta build that in context, because this isn't, you know, in LA, it's easy, it might be easy to hit 950 homes, but in a place where we are, that whole community is destroyed. We may not hit 950, but we'll come darn close to it. But the impacts to the local economy and the affected people are just as dramatic or more dramatic than they would be at 950. So the context needs to be properly built as we move this information up and down the chain of command. Right now, we've applied for, what was it, chief? A FEMA? What was that?
Chairman Gleason, early on in the fire, we applied for an FMAG. That's a federal fire management assistance grant, and that allows local government firefighting agencies to receive 75% reimbursement of the cost associated with fighting that, this devastating wildfire.
So we've got 75% of that, 13 million, did you talk, did you say? That it cost us so far?
Chairman Gleason, $13 million have been spent to date to extinguish that fire, but in the context, that's aircraft, helicopters, bulldozers. The FMAG allows local government fire departments, primarily the structure protection, saving the structures.
Okay.
And I think to put it into context with your number of 950, the 257 homes that have been confirmed destroyed, there's much more saved. We could have hit that 950 number, but your firefighters saved those homes.
Thanks. The Director of OES also said, right as he got off the helicopter, he said, "Mick, you're gonna get, you get the 75 FMAG, 75% of that's coming in, but that other 25% remaining, we're gonna cover 70, he's gonna cover 75% of that remaining 25%." And he said, "There are other ways. We're gonna help you get financial support to help offset the cost and mitigation of taking care of this business." So I wanna make sure people understand- So I want to make sure people understood that. I got a couple rambling things, let me talk about real quick. Transition centers, you talked a minute about transition centers. Could you give us an update on that and how people up there who may have the opportunity to be watching this on their computer, how are they getting that information? How are we moving information up there with the problems we've had with AT&amp;T? They had a tower burned down, burnt down. And so, AT&amp;T was out. Verizon was working, but, so comms have been a major problem, and you've done a marvelous job, but there's still some areas we need to work on. Could you talk about the communications plan and transition centers now?
Chairman Gleason, members of the board, this fire has definitely taxed us, but it's also caused us to think outside the box. So with so many people impacted by the fire, and so many homes destroyed, so many communities affected, we had to come up with a way to repopulate our communities in a systematic way. And to make sure that we, the Kern County government, were there to help them as they moved back into their homes, their communities. So we came up with an idea of a transitional center. And we're going to be meeting with these people that are evacuated, some who lost their homes, some whose homes survived with firefighting efforts. And we're going to be working with them to integrate them back into their homes. We're going to pick communities, beginning with those that are the safest, that have been searched, the power is back on, or where the Southern Cal Edison is out of the area so it's safe. And we're going to be literally taking the people to their home to help them out, because we know if we just let them go back in and they pull up to no longer a home, we can't let that happen. We have to be there with them. So this whole transitional center is the first step in the repopulation. We're going to be with them as they go back into their homes. And for those that their home no longer exists, we're going to be there to provide all the support that we can. So, this is a big part of it. The communication, as you mentioned, when the cell phone tower went down within minutes of the incident, that really created communications issues with the affected populations and the firefighting efforts also. So we're trying to do it word of mouth. We have people that are integrated into the shelters. We have community meetings. We have billboards that are placed around the Kern Valley communities. We're trying to get the information out to everybody so they know how the process works. And it is going to be a challenge, because so many people are affected, but I can assure you that all the agencies that are working together are working extremely hard in this most difficult times. So we are working with the people. We want to make sure that when they go back in, they're supported and they're safe.
Chief, I got a comment that this unified command structure that you've developed, not you personally, but has been developed with the state of California, works. I saw it work last year at the Way Fire or the other fire we had there, I forget what it was. But it's just remarkable how the whole effort of fighting a firing and dealing with all the other issues associated with this fire come together and streamline their communication and create an organization that works and is functional, and everybody kind of knows what everybody's doing. It's remarkable. So my hat's off to you for heading the, being the co-lead of that unified command, and I think you've done a great job. Could you talk to me a little bit about, you mentioned Erskine Creek? The way I understand it is the fire was started a little south of Lake Isabella. It moved rapidly all across that side of the lake, all the way over to Kelso Valley Road, swung south, wind took it south, and now we have a wildfire raging south. It's still raging, and there's a chance of it coming back into Erskine Creek, and the topography of that would create an additional threat to the city of Lake Isabella. Could you talk about that for a minute?
Chairman Gleason, members of the board, the fire started in the area across from the Kern Valley High School. It rapidly burned up Cook's Peak and then began burning into our communities that are just south of Lake Isabella. As the fire continued to move, destroying everything in its path, it moved out into Kelso Valley. And then, we ended up with the typical wind change directions that occur in the evening, and actually, late into the morning. And it began burning in a southeast direction in the Kelso Valley area. And the fire continued to widen out behind our Kern Valley communities to the south. When we were together around midnight in Lake Isabella, there was another wind shift that blew the fire almost directly north, northeast, and it was burning into Yankee Canyon and then into Lake Isabella proper, right behind the county administrative building. As the weather changed Friday morning, the fire continued to burn south and east and to widen out into the Paiutes. Firefighting efforts Saturday continued into the Kelso Valley area, and the fire continued to burn into the Paiutes. One of the priorities was to control the fire that was up above Lake Isabella proper, and we've been successful in that. As the fire continues to widen out into the Paiutes, if it burns into the Erskine Creek drainage, then the fire has a potential, if it aligns with the wind, to burn up the Erskine Creek drainage directly into Lake Isabella and Bodfish. That is our number-one priority right now with firefighting efforts, to contain that fire, which is the western perimeter, to make sure it does not get into Erskine Creek drainage. That country is extremely rugged, steep. Again, the conditions, it's 100 degrees in the Kern River Valley. Extremely tough work for our firefighters, but we do have enough firefighters on scene to do that. We have contingency plans in place. If the fire did get into Erskine Creek and did make a push into the Kern River Valley, Lake Isabella again, we would be ready.
So when you say your number-one priority, which is, right now, battling that fire is protecting Lake Isabella, that means you're pounding that range with retardant from DCAs from aircraft. You've got forces deployed, structural forces, teams prepared to respond, and you're doing everything you can to save that community, if it were to be threatened.
Chairman Gleason, if the fire did move into the Erskine Creek drainage, we would throw everything at that fire. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief. That's what I want to hear. I can't tell you how impressed with the fire department and the Sheriff's Department and all the sources, but I mean, the people who, with the smoke all over their faces, you know, exhausted, working, working in 100-degree temperatures, it's stunning. Steve Watkins, Steve Prendergrast, Mark Savage, Josh at the Operations Center, just to name a few. And I'm missing hundreds of Kern County employees that are doing just absolutely phenomenal Fire is still raging. It's a wildland fire, and we need to be on top of that. So you need to get back to work. When are you hoping for 100% containment? Do you have any idea?
Chairman Gleason, probably another seven days for containment of the fire. Full control could be several weeks. There's a lot of hotspots. There's rehab work to be done. As you know, that we've had bulldozers working up there. We want to make sure that we repair where the bulldozers went through. There's still a lot of work to be done to fully control the wildland fire. So, it should be safe within the next seven days barring any wind event and the fire continuing to spread, but probably another couple weeks after that for full control.
The evacuation center, we now have two of them at Kernville Elementary School. The American Red Cross is remarkable in what they're doing and how they're managing it. The other evacuation center, well, the evacuation centers were South Fork Elementary School and Lake Isabella Senior Center. And then, we retreated and moved them to, because of threats to the community, and we moved, relocated them to Kernville Elementary, and it was St. Jude's Catholic Church, is that the other one?
Yes, sir.
And then, so there, St. Jude's is about to be closed, because I think there's only two or three people that are populating that evacuation center, and this full focus is at Kernville Elementary School. The human tragedy in this deal is breathtaking. It's breathtaking. The people that sit down and have lost everything and have no insurance or have minimum insurance and are living in cots, and the generous outpouring of this community in Ridge, for example, Ridgecrest. Ridgecrest got two truckloads, big vanfuls of clothes and stuff, and got it up to, unbelievable. We couldn't take all the goods that are coming from Bakersfield, that are coming from all over the place. We have no structure designed to accept all the charity in terms of goods and take them to where you want them to go. We're working on it, but we just, we weren't prepared for the outpouring of generosity coming from Bakersfield and the surrounding community. Everybody, Shaft are calling me, everybody. So it's remarkable. We're working as best we can. The evacuation centers are still up and moving well. The American Red Cross is doing a great job. Okay, just a couple more things, then I'm done. So have we said everything we need to say about those evacuation centers? Is there anything we're missing?
Chairman Gleason, just a couple points on evacuation center. When the fires were burning, we were evacuating people out of the communities, and we didn't have defined evacuation centers. That takes some time to set up. We were getting people in safe refuge areas, the South Fork School, to get them out of the way of the fire. And then, as we opened up the evacuation senior at the Lake Isabella Senior Citizen Center and got people being taken care of the first night, and then we expanded our shelter operations. This has probably been one of the largest sheltering operations that we've done in the county of Kern.
It's remarkable. I have a friend, just a quick story, just to give you, I had a friend who drove up there with 500 hot dogs and hamburgers in his grill. He was out back cooking his hot dogs and hamburgers, getting ready to serve everybody in the evacuation center. Meanwhile, after he drove up there with all that food, somebody else drove in from the other direction with about 700 pizzas. So everybody's eating pizza. This is just an example, and he's out cooking hot dogs and hamburgers that nobody's eating. It's just an example of the outpouring of this community, of our Kern County-strong community, to support a community, one of our own communities in stress. So it's just remarkable to see. Last thing, you said 257 homes have been impacted. Are you, is it fair to say you're expecting that number to dramatically increase?
Chairman Gleason, 257 homes have been confirmed. Damage assessment teams are on the ground again today. We're trying to finalize that hopefully by 6:00 PM, and we'll have further numbers, but 257 are confirmed, totally destroyed.
Right. What I want to say about, well, last thing about this repopulation plan, right now, you're making professional determinations along with our county, our Department of Public Health and Cal Water and other groups to determine when and how the communities are safe, and you have a stage, you have a plan, a sophisticated plan where you're allowing people to get back in. The people up there are extremely frustrated because the heat, they've lost their homes, they don't know where their dogs are or their horses are, they have, they're living, they haven't taken a shower in four days. You can imagine, people, everybody can imagine the horrors. We have, we have, we started, initiated this repopulation plan. It's in work. You're working diligently with the community. We've already let people back in gradually, but people need to understand, they need to be patient, because we will tell them, and we will have the best possible way of telling them, when the water doesn't need boil notices on water, when propane tanks aren't at risk of exploding anymore, when power lines have been shut down because they're on the ground all over the place up there. It's a mess, colossal mess. And so, I'm thankful, the people, as patient as they can be, I understand their frustration, but we have to do this as best we can. Anything you want to add on top of my comments about the repopulation plan?
Chairman Gleason, I would like to stress, as you just said, we want to make sure our people are safe. They survived the fire, and if they just got back in there and a burning tree fell on them, or they were injured by the sharp metal or the inhalation injuries from the smoke, or as they go through their homes, maybe asbestos, that's not what we're here for. We're here for our public safety, to repopulate this area safely, and to make sure our people have a support system as we let them back in. We're not just going to let them back in and not be there to support them emotionally and mentally, because this is total devastation.
Okay. Thanks. We could go on and on about the horrors. I think we've said enough. Supervisor Maggard, thank you.
I didn't want to cut you off prematurely. You're done? Okay, thank you. I have two questions about some of the consequences of the fire. Many, many people were displaced. I'm sure they didn't take their medicine with them. Whether their home is destroyed or not, many people don't have prescriptions with them. So what are we doing to make sure that those, is there some kind of way that we can, kind of like reverse 911 works, where we can go to the source and figure out who in the area lives in an affected area to make sure they have their meds?
Supervisor Maggard through the chair, yes, this is one of the reasons that we preach emergency preparedness. Doesn't have to be a wildland fire, could be an earthquake, could be a flood. And people have to be prepared, and that medicines and those medical issues need to be people's, one of their top priorities, so they're prepared to deal with a disaster. In this case, we have worked with people, with the Sheriff's Department, they're managing the control, the access, to get people their medicine. We've been working with the Red Cross and other agencies to help people out. But this is definitely one of the impacts people need to prepare for in the event of a disaster.
So is someone working to make sure that that drugstore knows who is affected and how to make sure those prescriptions are available for them if they're, if they don't have the medicine with them?
Supervisor Maggard, we're working in the shelters with people to make sure that every one of their needs are being met.
Okay, thank you. Besides the tragedy to our community at large and all the resources that we're pouring into that, I'm, I want to tell you how proud I was to watch the news, and department after department got up and talked about every facet of this that we're trying to manage for people. I appreciate seeing our staff out there doing that in the field, and I'm proud of the way that we responded to such a horrific event. But besides all the others, all of that, we are also an employer, and one of our employees was, there only one firefighter that works for the county of Kern who lost his home, but were any of our other staff for the county of Kern affected by, in that?
Supervisor Maggard, I'm not aware of any other county employee who lost their home.
Mr. Nilon, are you aware of some?
Supervisor Gleason through the chair, we're aware of at least one more, and that would be an employee of the Department of General Services.
So, I'm interested, as an employer, what we can do to help our own. And is that a program that we go to our employees, ask for them to donate to a fund that we can set up inside the county? I'm interested in us making sure that, as an employer, the people that work for us are taken care of, that were affected by this. So is that something you can handle and then get word out to us on how we can spread the word?
Supervisor Maggard through the chair, I'd be pleased to do so.
Thank you. I'm proud of you and all the people that are responding. Chief, please thank your crews. And Supervisor Gleason, thank you for being on top of it.
Thank you, Ms. Maggard. I think his, I'm sure his thought was, not just our employees who have lost their homes, but there are degrees of loss. So I think that's exactly what we're talking about. Who's been adversely impacted by this, and how can we help? And that's what we're going to do. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, so I'm looking for a motion on the request from the fire chief.
So moved.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
I am 30B. Proposed urgency ordinance to provide waiver of gate fees for disposal of residential structural debris from the Erskine Fire Local Emergency Area. Mr. Ewart, Ms. Ewart, I'm sorry. Mr. Ewart. Mr. Pope's not here.
Chairman Gleason, members of the board, Waste Management will be making this part of the presentation in regards to their operation.
Thanks, Chief.
Supervisor Gleason, members of the board. We have had similar situations in the past, unfortunately, and as residents begin to clean up from the devastation of a fire, many do not have insurance, and they need to be able to bring their structural debris, which typically is charged a gate fee, into our solid waste facilities. So we come to you with this urgency ordinance to allow those that are already starting to clean up, who can get back into the community, to have opportunities to bring it into, in this case, the Kern Valley Transfer Station, which is then transported to the Ridgecrest landfill. So this is just the beginning. We have to anticipate the recovery that's coming. We will also be working with Cal Recycle. They have a fabulous program where they come down and help those that have had total devastation remediate and mitigate any of the issues on their sites. So just in preparation and looking forward to the recovery to the community and trying to help as we can.
Thank you. Open this up for public comment. Any in public wishing to make comment on this issue? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for a motion. Move approval.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
Item number 30C, request for a resolution ratifying proclamation that a local health emergency exists within the Kern, within the Kern County of Kern due to potentially hazardous conditions and the threat to the public safety as a result of the Erskine Fire near Lake Isabella. Chief.
Chairman Gleason, members of the board. This is a team effort, and so many of your county departments are on the front lines with the fire department, working on this incident and the recovery. The Public Health Department will be making this part of the presentation.
Mr. Chairman, good morning. Matt Constantine, Director of Kern County Public Health. Just very briefly, I want to tell you that public health has played a big role in this response, has already been mentioned. We got a request to provide nurses at the two shelters. Since Friday morning, we've been providing 24-hour coverage with two nurses at all times at both shelters. We were asked to help stand up a call center. With one call, we got 10 public health employees there, and they have not left. They're working 12-hour shifts at the call center to provide a friendly voice. We gave them two objectives, answer the phone and smile, see what you can do to help people and be responsive. We also, as you know, assisted with the relocation of more than 70 patients within the Kern River Hospital in Mount Mesa. They were struggling with transportation. They had a skilled nursing facility of 69 patients. They could not get out. One call, we called Hall Ambulance, and it was pretty impressive to see the caravan of Hall Ambulance coming up the Kern River Valley to assist. It was an amazing event, and they were very responsive, and I'm very thankful they were there to help. We have a number of water systems that are affected. We have more than 87 water systems. In fact, we have more than 200 wells that have been impacted. We have hazardous materials facilities. We have, food facilities have been affected. There's a lot going on. We've deployed four assessment teams, as the chief has mentioned, to try to determine the degree of damage. We're worried about what happens when fires come through businesses and homes, and what chemicals can be, can be in that ash. We want people to be very careful. So we're, we're working really hard to try to provide that information up. And as you've already mentioned, Chairman, I have never been prouder to be a county employee than today and this event. You have some amazing employees that just gives you goosebumps. It's an amazing group of people. So the item before you today is to ratify a proclamation. What that's going to do is it's going to allow the state to bring resources, both the experts that will come down and also the ability to help residents that have had homes destroyed to remove that ash in a safe way. We're very concerned about what that can do to the community. So this ratification deploys and makes available additional resources to those that have been impacted. That concludes my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks. Okay, let's open it up for public for comment. Anybody in the public wishing to make comment about this particular issue, item 30C? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for a comment consideration.
Motion approved, 30C.
Second. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you. Now we're going to rebound back to the beginning of our agenda. Let the fire chief go do his thing. Good luck, Chief, and great work. And we're going to go back to item number four, which is proclaimed July 2016 as Purple Ribbon Month in Kern County in acknowledgement of Caitlin's Law. Supervisor Scrivner.
Motion approved. Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. July is designated as Purple Ribbon Month in order to educate and increase public awareness of the dangers of leaving children unattended in or around motor vehicles. This month is in memory of Caitlin Marie Russell and all the children that have lost their lives to preventable injuries in and around cars. Caitlin's Law makes it a citable offense to leave a child six years of age or younger unattended in a motor vehicle without the supervision of someone at least 12 years of age. Caitlin was six months old when she died on August 15, 2000, after being left in a car by her caregiver. In conjunction with our law enforcement partners, the Kern County Department of Human Services will hold a press conference and safety demonstration on Wednesday, June 29, 2016, at Colonel H. Nichols Elementary School, 3401 Renegade Avenue in Bakersfield. And I have Deana Murphy with me from our Department of Human Services, and I'm going to present this to you, Deana. I know she's going to introduce all of our partners in this effort that are standing behind us. Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern, State of California, has officially proclaimed July 2016 as Purple Ribbon Month in Kern County, and this recognition has been entered in our official minutes, signed by our Honorable Chairman Mick Gleason and Ms. Murphy. If you would please say a few words and introduce the folks behind us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Scrivner. Thank you so much, Chairman Gleason and members of the board, for recognizing July as Purple Ribbon Month in Kern County and giving us the opportunity to raise public awareness about the tragedy that happened with Caitlin in 2000. The temperature within the car that day when they found her reached 130 degrees when they took her out. So you can imagine the devastation of that family, and I, I met them personally when they began the effort to establish Caitlin's Law, and they came to Kern County and actually had a demonstration in front of the Department of Human Services. This is not an effort that Human Services takes on alone. There are many partners joining me today, and if I could just introduce some of them. We've got Cindy London from the Bakersfield Police Department, Shelley Castaneda from the Sheriff's Department, Roland Myers, our Executive Director from First Five, Tom Corson, our Executive Director from Kern County Network for Children, our chief, of course, Brian Marshall, Fire Chief, our Public Health Director, Matt Constantine, and Nick Cullen from Animal Services. We all keep a common message in the effort to bring awareness to safety around cars, and I thank our partners for joining us, because again, in this last year, we've lost 16, 16 nationwide, 16 little lives lost. So as Supervisor Scrivner said, we are going to meet on the 29th at 10 at 3401 Renegade Avenue at the school to talk about the importance of the surroundings. And this can be as simple as family members changing a routine in the car and leaving a wallet or a second set of keys to get into an office or a purse or a briefcase with their child, so that, you know, tragically, when children fall asleep in the back of the car, 54% of these have been accidents. There are some that aren't accidents. You know, I think that everyone saw the media last week with an individual who'd put three children in the trunk of the car to get to the movies, because the car was filled with other children. And when I left the Purple Ribbon Month last year on this day, just before noon, I went by the Department of Human Services, and a man was loading five children in the back of a car, like a moving van, with a pull-down top, unrestrained. It was already approaching 100 degrees outside and took off. And so I followed them and called the police. But this is very real, that people seem not to be aware of the consequences of heat in vehicles. The other thing that's very striking in the demonstration is they have preschoolers line up behind a sports utility vehicle, and it took 19 little preschoolers before you could actually visually see them in the back of the sports utility vehicle. So this is really about car seat safety, heat safety, safety issues surrounding, and our first responders on a day-in, day-out basis deal with this within our community. So we thank you so very much for bringing awareness to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Next up is item number five, proclaimed July 2016 as Parks Make Life Better Month in Kern County. Supervisor Couch.
Motion for the proclamation. Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It occurs to me with all the serious discussion that's taken on this morning, this is an odd time to talk about Parks Make Life Better Month, but it's exactly what parks do. They give us a little bit of a break from all the tough stuff that we deal with all the time, every day, even if you just want to go, sit on a bench and think about nothing. So I'm going to read the proclamation. I'm going to let Bob say a couple of nice words, and let's all, let's all decide here this month to go out and use a park a little bit more than we normally do. We're all dealing with a lot of tough stuff, budgets and the fire. Everybody could use a little bit of a break. Proclamation reads, the Board of Supervisors, County of Kern, State of California, has officially proclaimed July 2016 as Parks Make Life Better Month in Kern County, and the recognition has been entered in the official board minutes, signed by the Honorable Chairman Mick Gleason, as stated today, June 28, 2016. I'll present this to the Honorable Bob LaRue and give Bob a couple, a chance to say a couple of words.
Thank you, sir.
No, don't forget it.
Yeah, thank you. Good morning, Bob LaRue with the Kern County Parks and Recreation Department. I'd like to thank you for proclaiming July as Parks Make Life Better Month in Kern County. Throughout the state of California this month, July is being recognized as Parks and Recreation Month due to the importance of parks and recreation facilities for residents and visitors. As you're aware, we have senior veterans, recreation community buildings that provide a location for daily meals for seniors, recreation classes such as square dancing, line dancing, community meetings, emergency centers, and many times a location for folks to get out of the heat through our cooling centers. As an example, today, our cooling centers are open. Our parks and recreation facilities are locations used for sports, such as Samlin Ballpark, or large community events like the Nut Festival, which take place at Strandler Park and the museum, or Piles Boys Camp, or even our local parks, such as Fraser Park with Fiesta Days. We have many lakes, which are used for boating, jet skiing, fishing, swimming. We have campgrounds on the valley floor at Buena Vista, Lake Ming, campgrounds up in the mountain to get out of the heat, Greenhorn Mountain Park, Tehachapi Mountain Park. We have many local parks, which spray parks, which beat the heat. In fact, we just opened up a new spray park last week, Pioneer Park in Supervisor Maggert's district. We have many baseball soccer fields out there, where we have AOYSO, Little League's using. We have three public golf courses, North Kern, Buena Vista, and Kern River. All these buildings, parks, and recreation facilities provide a place for residents and visitors of Kern County to create, recreate, and relax. Additionally, I would like to thank our employees for the hard work they do to maintain the buildings, the parks, and the facilities. And in the board letter that I put in, I wanted to list their names so they can hear the Employees of the Year. TJ Williams in our Park Ranger Division, Laura Akey and Rolanda Reyes in the Administrative and Buildings Division, and John Pimenta and Jose Yorolis in the Maintenance Division. And I want to give a special thank you to some of our employees who were working recently over the weekend here with the fire up in the Kern River Valley. We actually had our park rangers assisting the sheriff with the evacuations and actually patrolling the well in the south lake areas. We had our building service workers working at the Lake Isabella Senior Veterans Building, putting in many hours, like many of the employees and volunteers. And we also had our park workers actually working with the fire department with some of the staging areas in our parks, which traditionally get used for a lot of the fire personnel and their equipment. So in conclusion, I'd like to thank your board for recognizing July as Parks Make Life Better Month in Kern County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaRue. I know Mr. Maggert has something he'd like to...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to just echo and thank you, Bob, for the difference you make in the lives of people in parks. They're overlooked, they're underappreciated sometimes, but I don't know about my colleagues, but I'm asked on occasion, do you like doing this job? And I tell people, most of the time, I like doing this job. Sometimes I do not like doing this job. But when we went there on Wednesday and opened this spray park at Pioneer Park, it made all of the, I'm going to be careful what word I use here, all of the bad stuff that we deal with, worth it when you look into the eyes of so many children who's, not only this summer, but every summer thereafter, is so much better with that, with that spray park. And I want to thank you, your staff, Jeff Frappwell and his staff, for making that grant get to us, $3.7 million that made that happen. But I, and I thank you there, and you know I'm grateful to you guys for what you did. But what I want to reiterate to the public is what a treasure those parks are. One family came to me and said, they were just delighted people all over the place, but this one family said, once or twice a year, we could take our kids across town to another spray park, and now we're going to ride our bikes down the block and over a block to utilize this particular spray park. It's just perfect the way it's set up, and it makes just a tremendous difference in the quality of life for people. So it isn't all just about the things that we seem, tend to get focused on here, and just a great rec, remember it's force that you're bringing to our attention today. So thank you, guys, for making a difference in people's lives that way.
Thank you, Supervisor Maggert through the chair. And I might mention, I was out at the East Isle Senior Center last night, and Norma just really appreciates all your support. But again, another example, they're out there having dinner, having some music being played, using the senior center at a time where it's very hot. So a lot of those facilities provide a lot of opportunities for recreation, some are youth, all the way up through our seniors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaRue. And thank you Supervisor Couch and Maggert for contributing. Next up, we have a public records request from Harvey Hall, founder and president of Hall Ambulance, to address the board concerning the donations, a specific donation, and I'm going to ask Supervisor Maggert to go down and make an introduction. Mr. Hall, if you would just wait just a second, Mr. Maggert's going to introduce you. Thank you.
We have the blessing in our community of having a person who is generous and magnanimous and gives back to our community in many, many ways. Not only is he the mayor of Baker, city of Bakersfield, the largest city in Kern County, but he's also the owner and operator of Hall Ambulance, and it is kind of him and generous of him to help us with the donation of this automated external defibrillator, which will certainly save someone's life at some point, and this isn't the first one that he's been a part of. So Bob, would, I'm sorry, Jeff, would you say something first about, a little bit more about that, and then we'll let Harvey come up and say something?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You know, it is a great pleasure to be here, and we, as Supervisor Gleason mentioned, you know, when, when we have our issues within the county, this really is a community that comes together and, and makes a difference in people's lives and makes volunteers. We have a very...
Thank you.[242.36][242.36][S02. Thank you.[243.36][243.36][S02. Thank you.[244.36][244.36][S02. Thank you.[245.36][245.36][S02. Thank you.[246.36][246.36][S02. Thank you.[247.36][247.36][S02. Thank you.[248.36][248.36][S02. Thank you.[249.36][249.36][S02. Thank you.[250.36][250.36][S02. Thank you.[251.36][251.36][S02. Thank you.[252.36][252.36][S02. Thank you.[253.36][253.36][S02. Thank you.[254.36][254.36][S02. Thank you.[255.36][255.36][S02. Thank you.[256.36][256.36][S02. Thank you.[257.36][257.36][S02. Thank you.[258.36][258.36][S02. Thank you.[259.36][259.36][S02. Thank you.[260.36][260.36][S02. Thank you.[261.36][261.36][S02. Thank you.[262.36][262.36][S02. Thank you.[263.36][263.36][S02. Thank you.[264.36][264.36][S02. Thank you.[265.36][265.36][S02. Thank you.[266.36][266.36][S02. Thank you.[267.36][267.36][S02. Thank you.[268.36][268.36][S02. Thank you.[269.36][269.36][S02. Thank you.[270.36][270.36][S02. Thank you.[271.36][271.36][S02. Thank you.[272.36][272.36][S02. Thank you.[273.36][273.36][S02. Thank you.[274.36][274.36][S02. Thank you.[275.36][275.36][S02. Thank you.[276.36][276.36][S02. Thank you.[277.36][277.36][S02. Thank you.[278.36][278.36][S02. Thank you.[279.36][279.36][S02. Thank you.[280.36][280.36][S02. Thank you.[281.36][281.36][S02. Thank you.[282.36][282.36][S02. Thank you.[283.36][283.36][S02. Thank you.[284.36][284.36][S02. Thank you.[285.36][285.36][S02. Thank you.[286.36][286.36][S02. Thank you.[287.36][287.36][S02. Thank you.[288.36][288.36][S02. Thank you.[289.36][289.36][S02. Thank you.[290.36][290.36][S02. Thank you.[291.36][291.36][S02. Thank you.[292.36][292.36][S02. Thank you.[293.36][293.36][S02. Thank you.[294.36][294.36][S02. Thank you.[295.36][295.36][S02. Thank you.[296.36][296.36][S02. Thank you.[297.36][297.36][S02. Thank you.[298.36][298.36][S02. Thank you.[299.36][299.36][S02. Thank you.[300.36][300.36][S02. Thank you.[301.36][301.36][S02. Thank you.[302.36][302.36][S02. Thank you.[303.36][303.36][S02. Thank you.[304.36][304.36][S02. Thank you.[305.36][305.36][S02. Thank you.[306.36][306.36][S02. Thank you.[307.36][307.36][S02. Thank you.[308.36][308.36][S02. Thank you.[309.36][309.36][S02. Thank you.[310.36][310.36][S02. Thank you.[311.36][311.36][S02. Thank you.[312.36][312.36][S02. Thank you.[313.36][313.36][S02. Thank you.[314.36][314.36][S02. Thank you.[315.36][315.36][S02. Thank you.[316.36][316.36][S02. Thank you.[317.36][317.36][S02. Thank you.[318.36][318.36][S02. Thank you.[319.36][319.36][S02. Thank you.[320.36][320.36][S02. Thank you.[321.36][321.36][S02. Thank you.[322.36][322.36][S02. Thank you.[323.36][323.36][S02. Thank you.[324.36][324.36][S02. Thank you.[325.36][325.36][S02. Thank you.[326.36][326.36][S02. Thank you.[327.36][327.36][S02. Thank you.[328.36][328.36][S02. Thank you.[329.36][329.36][S02. Thank you.[330.36][330.36][S02. Thank you.[331.36][331.36][S02. Thank you.[332.36][332.36][S02. Thank you.[333.36][333.36][S02. Thank you.[334.36][334.36][S02. Thank you.[335.36][335.36][S02. Thank you.[336.36][336.36][S02. Thank you.[337.36][337.36][S02. Thank you.[338.36][338.36][S02. Thank you.[339.36][339.36][S02. Thank you.[340.36][340.36][S02. Thank you.[341.36][341.36][S02. Thank you.[342.36][342.36][S02. Thank you.[343.36][343.36][S02. Thank you.[344.36][344.36][S02. Thank you.[345.36][345.36][S02. Thank you.[346.36][346.36][S02. Thank you.[347.36][347.36][S02. Thank you.[348.36][348.36][S02. Thank you.[349.36][349.36][S02. Thank you.[350.36][350.36][S02. Thank you.[351.36][351.36][S02. Thank you.[352.36][352.36][S02. Thank you.[353.36][353.36][S02. Thank you.[354.36][354.36][S02. Thank you.[355.36][355.36][S02. Thank you.[356.36][356.36][S02. Thank you.[357.36][357.36][S02. Thank you.[358.36][358.36][S02. Thank you.[359.36][359.36][S02. Thank you.[360.36][360.36][S02. Thank you.[361.36][361.36][S02. Thank you.[362.36][362.36][S02. Thank you.[363.36][363.36][S02. Thank you.[364.36][364.36][S02. Thank you.[365.36][365.36][S02. Thank you.[366.36][366.36][S02. Thank you.[367.36][367.36][S02. Thank you.[368.36][368.36][S02. Thank you.[369.36][369.36][S02. Thank you.[370.36][370.36][S02. Thank you.[371.36][371.36][S02. Thank you.[372.36][372.36][S02. Thank you.[373.36][373.36][S02. Thank you.[374.36][374.36][S02. Thank you.[375.36][375.36][S02. Thank you.[376.36][376.36][S02. Thank you.[377.36][377.36][S02. Thank you.[378.36][378.36][S02. Thank you.[379.36][379.36][S02. Thank you.[380.36][380.36][S02. Thank you.[381.36][381.36][S02. Thank you.[382.36][382.36][S02. Thank you.[383.36][383.36][S02. Thank you.[384.36][384.36][S02. Thank you.[385.36][385.36][S02. Thank you.[386.36][386.36][S02. Thank you.[387.36][387.36][S02. Thank you.[388.36][388.36][S02. Thank you.[389.36][389.36][S02. Thank you.[390.36][390.36][S02. Thank you.[391.36][391.36][S02. Thank you.[392.36][392.36][S02. Thank you.[393.36][393.36][S02. Thank you.[394.36][394.36][S02. Thank you.[395.36][395.36][S02. Thank you.[396.36][396.36][S02. Thank you.[397.36][397.36][S02. Thank you.[398.36][398.36][S02. Thank you.[399.36][399.36][S02. Thank you.[400.36][400.36][S02. Thank you.[401.36][401.36][S02. Thank you.[402.36][402.36][S02. Thank you.[403.36][403.36][S02. Thank you.[404.36][404.36][S02. Thank you.[405.36][405.36][S02. Thank you.[406.36][406.36][S02. Thank you.[407.36][407.36][S02. Thank you.[408.36][408.36][S02. Thank you.[409.36][409.36][S02. Thank you.[410.36][410.36][S02. Thank you.[411.36][411.36][S02. Thank you.[412.36][412.36][S02. Thank you.[413.36][413.36][S02. Thank you.[414.36][414.36][S02. Thank you.[415.36][415.36][S02. Thank you.[416.36][416.36][S02. Thank you.[417.36][417.36][S02. Thank you.[418.36][418.36][S02. Thank you.[419.36][419.36][S02. Thank you.[420.36][420.36][S02. Thank you.[421.36][421.36][S02. Thank you.[422.36][422.36][S02. Thank you.[423.36][423.36][S02. Thank you.[424.36][424.36][S02. Thank you.[425.36][425.36][S02. Thank you.[426.36][426.36][S02. Thank you.[427.36][427.36][S02. Thank you.[428.36][428.36][S02. Thank you.[429.36][429.36][S02. Thank you.[430.36][430.36][S02. Thank you.[431.36][431.36][S02. Thank you.[432.36][432.36][S02. Thank you.[433.36][433.36][S02. Thank you.[434.36][434.36][S02. Thank you.[435.36][435.36][S02. Thank you.[436.36][436.36][S02. Thank you.[437.36][437.36][S02. Thank you.[438.36][438.36][S02. Thank you.[439.36][439.36][S02. Thank you.[440.36][440.36][S02. Thank you.[441.36][441.36][S02. Thank you.[442.36][442.36][S02. Thank you.[443.36][443.36][S02. Thank you.[444.36][444.36][S02. Thank you.[445.36][445.36][S02. Thank you.[446.36][446.36][S02. Thank you.[447.36][447.36][S02. Thank you.[448.36][448.36][S02. Thank you.[449.36][449.36][S02. Thank you.[450.36][450.36][S02. Thank you.[451.36][451.36][S02. Thank you.[452.36][452.36][S02. Thank you.[453.36][453.36][S02. Thank you.[454.36][454.36][S02. Thank you.[455.36][455.36][S02. Thank you.[456.36][456.36][S02. Thank you.[457.36][457.36][S02. Thank you.[458.36][458.36][S02. Thank you.[459.36][459.36][S02. Thank you.[460.36][460.36][S02. Thank you.[461.36][461.36][S02. Thank you.[462.36][462.36][S02. Thank you.[463.36][463.36][S02. Thank you.[464.36][464.36][S02. Thank you.[465.36][465.36][S02. Thank you.[466.36][466.36][S02. Thank you.[467.36][467.36][S02. Thank you.[468.36][468.36][S02. Thank you.[469.36][469.36][S02. Thank you.[470.36][470.36][S02. Thank you.[471.36][471.36][S02. Thank you.[472.36][472.36][S02. Thank you.[473.36][473.36][S02. Thank you.[474.36][474.36][S02. Thank you.[475.36][475.36][S02. Thank you.[476.36][476.36][S02. Thank you.[477.36][477.36][S02. Thank you.[478.36][478.36][S02. Thank you.[479.36][479.36][S02. Thank you.[480.36][480.36][S02. Thank you.[481.36][481.36][S02. Thank you.[482.36][482.36][S02. Thank you.[483.36][483.36][S02. Thank you.[484.36][484.36][S02. Thank you.[485.36][485.36][S02. Thank you.[486.36][486.36][S02. Thank you.[487.36][487.36][S02. Thank you.[488.36][488.36][S02. Thank you.[489.36][489.36][S02. Thank you.[490.36][490.36][S02. Thank you.[491.36][491.36][S02. Thank you.[492.36][492.36][S02. Thank you.[493.36][493.36][S02. Thank you.[494.36][494.36][S02. Thank you.[495.36][495.36][S02. Thank you.[496.36][496.36][S02. Thank you.[497.36][497.36][S02. Thank you.[498.36][498.36][S02. Thank you.[499.36][499.36][S02. Thank you.[500.36][500.36][S02. Thank you.[501.36][501.36][S02. Thank you.[502.36][502.36][S02. Thank you.[503.36][503.36][S02. Thank you.[504.36][504.36][S02. Thank you.[505.36][505.36][S02. Thank you.[506.36][506.36][S02. Thank you.[507.36][507.36][S02. Thank you.[508.36][508.36][S02. Thank you.[509.36][509.36][S02. Thank you.[510.36][510.36][S02. Thank you.[511.36][511.36][S02. Thank you.[512.36][512.36][S02. Thank you.[513.36][513.36][S02. Thank you.[514.36][514.36][S02. Thank you.[515.36][515.36][S02. Thank you.[516.36][516.36][S02. Thank you.[517.36][517.36][S02. Thank you.[518.36][518.36][S02. Thank you.[519.36][519.36][S02. Thank you.[520.36][520.36][S02. Thank you.[521.36][521.36][S02. Thank you.[522.36][522.36][S02. Thank you.[523.36][523.36][S02. Thank you.[524.36][524.36][S02. Thank you.[525.36][525.36][S02. Thank you.[526.36][526.36][S02. Thank you.[527.36][527.36][S02. Thank you.[528.36][528.36][S02. Thank you.[529.36][529.36][S02. Thank you.[530.36][530.36][S02. Thank you.[531.36][531.36][S02. Thank you.[532.36][532.36][S02. Thank you.[533.36][533.36][S02. Thank you.[534.36][534.36][S02. Thank you.[535.36][535.36][S02. Thank you.[536.36][536.36][S02. Thank you.[537.36][537.36][S02. Thank you.[538.36][538.36][S02. Thank you.[539.36][539.36][S02. Thank you.[540.36][540.36][S02. Thank you.[541.36][541.36][S02. Thank you.[542.36][542.36][S02. Thank you.[543.36][543.36][S02. Thank you.[544.36][544.36][S02. Thank you.[545.36][545.36][S02. Thank you.[546.36][546.36][S02. Thank you.[547.36][547.36][S02. Thank you.[548.36][548.36][S02. Thank you.[549.36][549.36][S02. Thank you.[550.36][550.36][S02. Thank you.[551.36][551.36][S02. Thank you.[552.36][552.36][S02. Thank you.[553.36][553.36][S02. Thank you.[554.36][554.36][S02. Thank you.[555.36][555.36][S02. Thank you.[556.36][556.36][S02. Thank you.[557.36][557.36][S02. Thank you.[558.36][558.36][S02. Thank you.[559.36][559.36][S02. Thank you.[560.36][560.36][S02. Thank you.[561.36][561.36][S02. Thank you.[562.36][562.36][S02. Thank you.[563.36][563.36][S02. Thank you.[564.36][564.36][S02. Thank you.[565.36][565.36][S02. Thank you.[566.36][566.36][S02. Thank you.[567.36][567.36][S02. Thank you.[568.36][568.36][S02. Thank you.[569.36][569.36][S02. Thank you.[570.36][570.36][S02. Thank you.[571.36][571.36][S02. Thank you.[572.36][572.36][S02. Thank you.[573.36][573.36][S02. Thank you.[574.36][574.36][S02. Thank you.[575.36][575.36][S02. Thank you.[576.36][576.36][S02. Thank you.[577.36][577.36][S02. Thank you.[578.36][578.36][S02. Thank you.[579.36][579.36][S02. Thank you.[580.36][580.36][S02. Thank you.[581.36][581.36][S02. Thank you.[582.36][582.36][S02. Thank you.[583.36][583.36][S02. Thank you.[584.36][584.36][S02. Thank you.[585.36][585.36][S02. Thank you.[586.36][586.36][S02. Thank you.[587.36][587.36][S02. Thank you.[588.36][588.36][S02. Thank you.[589.36][589.36][S02. Thank you.[590.36][590.36][S02. Thank you.[591.36][591.36][S02. Thank you.[592.36][592.36][S02. Thank you.[593.36][593.36][S02. Thank you.[594.36][594.36][S02. Thank you.[595.36][595.36][S02. Thank you.[596.36][596.36][S02. Thank you.[597.36][597.36][S02. Thank you.[598.36][598.36][S02. Thank you.[599.36][599.36][S02. Thank you.[600.36][600.36][S02. Thank you.[601.36][601.36][S02. Thank you.[602.36][602.36][S02. Thank you.[603.36][603.36][S02. Thank you.[604.36][604.36][S02. Thank you.[605.36][605.36][S02. Thank you.[606.36][606.36][S02. Thank you.[607.36][607.36][S02. Thank you.[608.36][608.36][S02. Thank you.[609.36][609.36][S02. Thank you.[610.36][610.36][S02. Thank you.[611.36][611.36][S02. Thank you.[612.36][612.36][S02. Thank you.[613.36][613.36][S02. Thank you.[614.36][614.36][S02. Thank you.[615.36][615.36][S02. Thank you.[616.36][616.36][S02. Thank you.[617.36][617.36][S02. Thank you.[618.36][618.36][S02. Thank you.[619.36][619.36][S02. Thank you.[620.36][620.36][S02. Thank you.[621.36][621.36][S02. Thank you.[622.36][622.36][S02. Thank you.[623.36][623.36][S02. Thank you.[624.36][624.36][S02. Thank you.[625.36][625.36][S02. Thank you.[626.36][626.36][S02. Thank you.[627.36][627.36][S02. Thank you.[628.36][628.36][S02. Thank you.[629.36][629.36][S02. Thank you.[630.36][630.36][S02. Thank you.[631.36][631.36][S02. Thank you.[632.36][632.36][S02. Thank you.[633.36][633.36][S02. Thank you.[634.36][634.36][S02. Thank you.[635.36][635.36][S02. Thank you.[636.36][636.36][S02. Thank you.[637.36][637.36][S02. Thank you.[638.36][638.36][S02. Thank you.[639.36][639.36][S02. Thank you.[640.36][640.36][S02. Thank you.[641.36][641.36][S02. Thank you.[642.36][642.36][S02. Thank you.[643.36][643.36][S02. Thank you.[644.36][644.36][S02. Thank you.[645.36][645.36][S02. Thank you.[646.36][646.36][S02. Thank you.[647.36][647.36][S02. Thank you.[648.36][648.36][S02. Thank you.[649.36][649.36][S02. Thank you.[650.36][650.36][S02. Thank you.[651.36][651.36][S02. Thank you.[652.36][652.36][S02. Thank you.[653.36][653.36][S02. Thank you.[654.36][654.36][S02. Thank you.[655.36][655.36][S02. Thank you.[656.36][656.36][S02. Thank you.[657.36][657.36][S02. Thank you.[658.36][658.36][S02. Thank you.[659.36][659.36][S02. Thank you.[660.36][660.36][S02. Thank you.[661.36][661.36][S02. Thank you.[662.36][662.36][S02. Thank you.[663.36][663.36][S02. Thank you.[664.36][664.36][S02. Thank you.[665.36][665.36][S02. Thank you.[666.36][666.36][S02. Thank you.[667.36][667.36][S02. Thank you.[668.36][668.36][S02. Thank you.[669.36][669.36][S02. Thank you.[670.36][670.36][S02. Thank you.[671.36][671.36][S02. Thank you.[672.36][672.36][S02. Thank you.[673.36][673.36][S02. Thank you.[674.36][674.36][S02. Thank you.[675.36][675.36][S02. Thank you.[676.36][676.36][S02. Thank you.[677.36][677.36][S02. Thank you.[678.36][678.36][S02. Thank you.[679.36][679.36][S02. Thank you.[680.36][680.36][S02. Thank you.[681.36][681.36][S02. Thank you.[682.36][682.36][S02. Thank you.[683.36][683.36][S02. Thank you.[684.36][684.36][S02. Thank you.[685.36][685.36][S02. Thank you.[686.36][686.36][S02. Thank you.[687.36][687.36][S02. Thank you.[688.36][688.36][S02. Thank you.[689.36][689.36][S02. Thank you.[690.36][690.36][S02. Thank you.[691.36][691.36][S02. Thank you.[692.36][692.36][S02. Thank you.[693.36][693.36][S02. Thank you.[694.36][694.36][S02. Thank you.[695.36][695.36][S02. Thank you.[696.36][696.36][S02. Thank you.[697.36][697.36][S02. Thank you.[698.36][698.36][S02. Thank you.[699.36][699.36][S02. Thank you.[700.36][700.36][S02. Thank you.[701.36][701.36][S02. Thank you.[702.36][702.36][S02. Thank you.[703.36][703.36][S02. Thank you.[704.36][704.36][S02. Thank you.[705.36][705.36][S02. Thank you.[706.36][706.36][S02. Thank you.[707.36][707.36][S02. Thank you.[708.36][708.36][S02. Thank you.[709.36][709.36][S02. Thank you.[710.36][710.36][S02. Thank you.[711.36][711.36][S02. Thank you.[712.36][712.36][S02. Thank you.[713.36][713.36][S02. Thank you.[714.36][714.36][S02. Thank you.[715.36][715.36][S02. Thank you.[716.36][716.36][S02. Thank you.[717.36][717.36][S02. Thank you.[718.36][718.36][S02. Thank you.[719.36][719.36][S02. Thank you.[720.36][720.36][S02. Thank you.[721.36][721.36][S02. Thank you.[722.36][722.36][S02. Thank you.[723.36][723.36][S02. Thank you.[724.36][724.36][S02. Thank you.[725.36][725.36][S02. Thank you.[726.36][726.36][S02. Thank you.[727.36][727.36][S02. Thank you.[728.36][728.36][S02. Thank you.[729.36][729.36][S02. Thank you.[730.36][730.36][S02. Thank you.[731.36][731.36][S02. Thank you.[732.36][732.36][S02. Thank you.[733.36][733.36][S02. Thank you.[734.36][734.36][S02. Thank you.[735.36][735.36][S02. Thank you.[736.36][736.36][S02. Thank you.[737.36][737.36][S02. Thank you.[738.36][738.36][S02. Thank you.[739.36][739.36][S02. Thank you.[740.36][740.36][S02. Thank you.[741.36][741.36][S02. Thank you.[742.36][742.36][S02. Thank you.[743.36][743.36][S02. Thank you.[744.36][744.36][S02. Thank you.[745.36][745.36][S02. Thank you.[746.36][746.36][S02. Thank you.[747.36][747.36][S02. Thank you.[748.36][748.36][S02. Thank you.[749.36][749.36][S02. Thank you.[750.36][750.36][S02. Thank you.[751.36][751.36][S02. Thank you.[752.36][752.36][S02. Thank you.[753.36][753.36][S02. Thank you.[754.36][754.36][S02. Thank you.[755.36][755.36][S02. Thank you.[756.36][756.36][S02. Thank you.[757.36][757.36][S02. Thank you.[758.36][758.36][S02. Thank you.[759.36][759.36][S02. Thank you.[760.36][760.36][S02. Thank you.[761.36][761.36][S02. Thank you.[762.36][762.36][S02. Thank you.[763.36][763.36][S02. Thank you.[764.36][764.36][S02. Thank you.[765.36][765.36][S02. Thank you.[766.36][766.36][S02. Thank you.[767.36][767.36][S02. Thank you.[768.36][768.36][S02. Thank you.[769.36][769.36][S02. Thank you.[770.36][770.36][S02. Thank you.[771.36][771.36][S02. Thank you.[772.36][772.36][S02. Thank you.[773.36][773.36][S02. Thank you.[774.36][774.36][S02. Thank you.[775.36][775.36][S02. Thank you.[776.36][776.36][S02. Thank you.[777.36][777.36][S02. Thank you.[778.36][778.36][S02. Thank you.[779.36][779.36][S02. Thank you.[780.36][780.36][S02. Thank you.[781.36][781.36][S02. Thank you.[782.36][782.36][S02. Thank you.[783.36][783.36][S02. Thank you.[784.36][784.36][S02. Thank you.[785.36][785.36][S02. Thank you.[786.36][786.36][S02. Thank you.[787.36][787.36][S02. Thank you.[788.36][788.36][S02. Thank you.[789.36][789.36][S02. Thank you.[790.36][790.36][S02. Thank you.[791.36][791.36][S02. Thank you.[792.36][792.36][S02. Thank you.[793.36][793.36][S02. Thank you.[794.36][794.36][S02. Thank you.[795.36][795.36][S02. Thank you.[796.36][796.36][S02. Thank you.[797.36][797.36][S02. Thank you.[798.36][798.36][S02. Thank you.[799.36][799.36][S02. Thank you.[800.36][800.36][S02. Thank you.[801.36][801.36][S02. Thank you.[802.36][802.36][S02. Thank you.[803.36][803.36][S02. Thank you.[804.36][804.36][S02. Thank you.[805.36][805.36][S02. Thank you.[806.36][806.36][S02. Thank you.[807.36][807.36][S02. Thank you.
Pursuant to this declaration, all fees for certified copies of birth, death, marriage, and dissolution of marriage records are suspended for any individual who lost such records as a result of the wildfires. This executive order will remain in effect until the governor terminates the proclaimed state of emergency. When requesting for free copies of a vital record, victims of the wildfires should state on the application, quote, "wildfire," unquote. Complete the attached sworn statement, you'll see that, declaring under penalty of perjury that they are a victim. The sworn statement for wildfire victims must be completed in addition to the sworn statement required by the Health and Safety Code, Section 103526. Please use the specific no-fee code, number 117, for victims of disaster, as we must report on a state transmittal of fees form the number of copies issued. So I wanted to make sure we got that into the record. And that's from the Assistant Recorder, Kern County Recorder, Hall of Records. Second thing is, Houchin Blood Bank is having a donation in our plaza right next door between the two buildings. Please feel free, they're accepting blood donations and any other type of donations that people wish to make. Third thing is that we need to nominate for the get board. So this board has received two nominations to fill one at-large member vacancy to the Golden Empire Transit District. In accordance with Rule 24 Echo of the Administrative and Procedural Rules for the Proceedings of the Board of Supervisors, four at-large appointments, the board may appoint a committee of its members to provide recommendations on candidates to the full board. So I need to appoint a committee consisting of two board members to serve as a nominating committee for this at-large member. The nominations were given to us by Supervisor Perez and Supervisor Gleason, so we are excluded from consideration of this nominating committee, but I'll need two other members who are eager to jump at an opportunity to excel as members of a nominating committee. And hearing any volunteers, absent that, I will appoint Supervisor Maggert.
I volunteer Supervisor Scrivener and Cow-- no, I'm just kidding. I'll volunteer.
Thanks, sir. Zack?
I will volunteer, voluntold, whatever.
Taking one for the team.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have two board members who are now nominated, will be members of our nominating committee, that is Supervisor Scrivener and Supervisor Maggert. Thank you, sirs, appreciate it. Last thing, what I want to do is, this is for, we are entering, we're time-critical on developing, how we're building relationships with these GSAs, groundwater sustainment agencies, so shift everybody's brain for a quick second. And one of those things is, we've got to come with a common understanding of who we're, we want to associate relationships with in these water districts, and the members of these water districts, and who they are, what they are. And my understanding, we have somewhere between 15 and 17 water districts in this central valley. What I would, I don't know any of these people, but it's not really important, but I don't know how they get elected, I don't know what their board consists of, I don't understand what their tenure is, I don't understand if they're popularly elected or appointed, or I don't understand how that all works. And before I have a relationship with these committees and these boards, I'd like to have a better understanding of exactly who they are. So I would like for Mr. Christiansen or somebody, Mr. Nilon, to come up with a matrix to explain their districts, their jurisdictions, their tenures, how they got elected, who they are, what they do, are they subject to Brown Law, Brown Act, or, all those informations vital to our understanding, have a better understanding of exactly who it is we're having a relationship with. Is that clear?
Supervisor, listener I should say, Chairman Gleason, that is crystal clear.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I don't think we need a vote on that. No vote. Okay, that's going to move us to item number, where did that, 46. So, hold on, we'll get to you in just a second. Okay. Item 46 is proposed appointment of a vacant community member at-large position, replacing Mr. Greg Bynum on the Kern County Hospital Authority Board of Governors, term to expire June 30, 2017. Mr. Judd.
Good morning, Mr. Supervisor Gleason, members of the board. I'm before you today representing the Kern County Hospital Authority to allow the board to select a replacement position in the Board of Governors of the Kern County Hospital Authority. Mr. Greg Bynum, it was necessary for him to resign his position. The county ordinance outlines the process whereby a new member of the Board of Governors is selected to fill a vacancy created in that board. The process for soliciting individuals who are interested in that board has taken us over the approximate last 60 days. We have done this in full, open communication. We posted it as appropriate in the county's positions, at the hospital level. The entire community had the availability to apply for that position. In addition, the individuals who had submitted applications prior, they remain in the pool of applicants for approximately one year. We had some of those who have withdrawn their names from that pool of applicants. Before you today, you do have the pool of applicants. You will each vote for one of those, but it'd probably be appropriate to call for any public comment before we walk through the voting process.
Thanks, Judd, appreciate it. Any public comment? Please state your name and spell it for us.
Yeah. My name is Josh Steiner, J-O-S-T-H-S-T-E-N-N-E-R. So I'm here representing health for Kern. Today, you are making an incredibly important decision. While this must surely be something that you are very clearly dealing with every single day, every time you congregate, the community has entrusted you five to make the tough choices on all of our behalfs. Today's decision is particularly important because today, you, the Board of Supervisors, have the tremendous opportunity to show the community that you are actively listening. That opportunity that's before you today is to recognize the needs of the community by selecting a member of that community to serve on the Board of Governors for the Hospital Authority. As you well know, this incredibly important Hospital Authority is responsible for the welfare of Kern Medical and for ensuring its ongoing operational success. As a result, the Authority's decision impacts the lives and well-being of roughly 160,000 Kern residents each year. Our ask to you today is simple, just as the Hospital Authority has made their nomination, as you have seen, so too has the community come together to nominate Dr. Bruce Friedman to represent us, the community, on the Board of Governors for the Hospital Authority. Dr. Friedman is a professor of social work at CSUB, who has quite literally written the book on health policy. His dedication to the community and extensive background on policy and research can only complement the Hospital Authority. In 2015, Dr. Friedman published a book, one of his many, titled Public Health: Social Work and Health Inequalities. Today, Dr. Friedman works on finding solutions to the health issues that are affecting Kern County residents, and he will most definitely bring a new perspective to our Hospital Authority. In a democracy, people have a voice, thus it would be fitting for us to have a community representative that has gained the favor of many advocating for the interests of the people. For us, that person is Bruce Friedman. Thank you. We also have a letter. Dr. Friedman could not be here today because he is doing a policy presentation in Korea, but we have, he wrote a statement to the Board of Supervisors. And then, Dr.?
Mr. Steiner, is that correct?
Steiner.
Steiner. Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Supervisor Maggert, may I have a question? Mr. Steiner? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't clear the queue, I'm sorry. Thank you, sir, for your comments. Okay. Any other public comment?
Good morning, Chairman Gleason and members of the board. My name is Pilar Medrano, and I'm here representing my community.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your name again?
Oh, Pilar Medrano.
Medrano?
Yes.
Thank you.
I am a volunteer promotora. I go into the community and see what our needs are. I go into training to help that community, and that is my job, and I'm here representing them today. And we want Dr. Bruce Friedman to be on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it.
Manuel Barrera, that's M-A-N-U-E-L, last name Barrera, B-A-R-R-E-R-A. Let's see. So, good morning, Chairman Gleason and members of the board. My name is Manuel Barrera, and I'm here on behalf of Dr. Bruce Friedman, who could not be here, to read his statement. So, hospitals are complex organizations that interface with multiple systems. The hospitals also have the responsibility for caring and providing for the wellness of a community. However, this has also become more complicated a result of the complexities with the current funding formulas that are designed to support and finance hospitals. These become important factors to consider when looking at the intersection of health of the organization and with the wellness of the community. As a social worker who has been on the faculty of a medical school, I have become well aware of the complexities assigned with the responsibilities for caring people of the community. As a social worker and a social work professor, I have become a champion for the underserved and the underprivileged in the community. Having had the experience of being on the faculty of both a medical school and a social work department, I have learned how these multiple systems operate and how they can work together to improve the wellness of the community. These are the knowledge, skills, and values that I would bring to the Hospital Authority if selected. It is important to have someone who has the knowledge of complex systems with the needs of the underserved members of the community in order to serve for the maximum benefit of the wellness of our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrera.
Hello, my name is Julio Vargas, J-U-L-I-O-V-A-R-G-A-S, and I'm with Faith in Action, and I just have a comment. We need a community voice, for, it's important, and, um... Sorry.
That's okay.
It's important for the work towards health for all, for Kern residents, and I support Bruce Friedman to be that voice.
Thank you.
My name is David Steiner, S-T-E-N-N-E-R, same as him. Good morning, Chairman Gleason and members of the board. I am here on behalf of the United Domestic Workers, and we are here with the Health for All team, also placing our recommendation of Dr. Bruce Friedman to be elected to the Hospital Authority for the Governors. And we would just hope that you take this into consideration, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Julia Otero, O-T-E-R-O. I also represent UDW, United Domestic Workers. The board, we are here because we really want to support Dr. Bruce Friedman, and this is why. The board most respect the will of the community and the process of democracy. I support Bruce Friedman, the community nominee, for the Hospital Authority Board of the Governors. Democracy is the ultimate way to empower the community when filling the vacancy on the Hospital Authority. Please vote for Mr. Bruce Friedman. Thank you so very much for your time this morning.
Thank you, Ms. Otero. Okay.
My name is Wyman Johnson, W-Y-M-O-N-J-O-H-N-S-O-N. Chairman Gleason, members of the board, I'm also here in support of Dr. Bruce Friedman. I believe that he would be a wonderful community voice for the community. I'm kind of nervous, so I don't usually speak in front of people, but it's important, that's how important it is that I support him, because I think that he would be wonderful. Thank you very much for your time.
Well said, Mr. Johnson, thank you. Okay, I don't see any other comments, so I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to ask Mr. Judd to come back up, and if you could please explain where we are in the process and how the ballots are going to be called out, and how Mr. Johnson, I mean, Mr. Friedman, that kind of stuff.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So there are, I got to count, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven individuals whose applications have been submitted and have cleared the appropriate background checks and are qualified to be selected as members of the Board of Governors. That does include Mr. Bruce Friedman, as mentioned by these individuals. He did fill out an application. He has not reached out to me or anyone else on the Board of Governors to express any type of interest in serving. We just received his application via an email. The Board of Governors did meet and appointed a nominating committee to review all of the applications that are in the pool. The official recommendation from the Board of Governors of the Kern County Hospital Authority is to select Mr. Steven Pelz, who is the Chief Executive Officer of the Kern County Housing Authority. Mr. Pelz understands the Authority, it's a similar organization to how ours is. He also readily serves with and advocates for the same population that we advocate for. His clientele that he serves is very similar, and we share much of the same clientele as he also reaches out and serves those who are in need. A ballot will be passed out to each members of those, those seven names are listed on there. You will check the box, we can select, there's one vacancy, so there is one selection to make one vote. After each of those votes, we will quickly tally them. A majority selects of those seven, a majority selects that, there's three votes for a single candidate. If there is more votes and someone doesn't receive a majority, we will re-tally, and those who received a vote will be placed on a second ballot, and we will vote again. So it'd be appropriate, I think the clerk's staff will pass out the ballots, and you can make your check, we will tally those, and then put the results on the document camera.
Thank you, Mr. Judd. Thank you, Mr. Judd. Karen is now passing out ballots, and I'll ask the board to cast their votes, then we'll collect the ballots, and we'll ask for a short recess.
Chairman Gleason?
Yes, ma'am.
Would it be helpful for me to remind the board of what the desired qualifications are before they cast the ballots?
Yes, please do.
Okay, thank you. Under the county ordinance, 2.170.060, it defines the qualifications for those to serve on the Hospital Authority Board, and there's two sections in it, and I'll just read it slowly, just to, as a general reminder to everybody. It says, "The Board of Governors shall be composed, to the extent feasible, of individuals with the expertise necessary to enable the Kern Medical Center to achieve the highest quality of care and appropriate scope of services in a manner which is both fiscally responsible and sensitive to the needs of the community. Desirable skills include, but are not limited to, business management, strategic planning, finance, public health policy, healthcare administration, personnel management, medical services, and consensus building." And then there's a second provision that refers to specific qualifications, the one that I just read were general qualifications. The specific qualification section reads as follows. Members of the Board of Governors must be full-time residents of the County of Kern, at least 18 years of age, and should, to the extent feasible, collectively have the following types of knowledge, skills, and experience. A, knowledge of healthcare delivery systems. B, knowledge of healthcare policy and regulatory issues, and with current and projected healthcare trends. C, knowledge of human resources in large organizations. D, an understanding of the budgeting process, revenue cycle, financial reports, and basic accounting principles. E, experience with managing hospital services, and understanding of the healthcare needs of the Hospital Authority's patient populations. And F, experience in advocating for safety net populations, including but not limited to the pursuit of public funding for the delivery of healthcare services. So those are all of the desired and specific qualifications, but as to the specific ones, those are, the ordinance says that it should, to the extent feasible, collectively, the board as a collective group should have those types of knowledge, skills, and experience. And that's what the ordinance says.
Thank you, Madam Constant. Karen, could you please collect the ballots? And we'll take a short recess. How much time do you need? Yeah, how about we give you like two minutes? So we're technically at a two-minute recess, we'll sit here and look pretty while they tally the ballots. There's going to be an appointment. Are you ready? Ready to reconvene? Okay, this board will reconvene with all members present. Madam Clerk, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ballot tabulation results show on the screen, shown on the screen reflect that Steven Pelz received four votes, that is a majority of the votes cast. Therefore, Steven Pelz is appointed as Community Member-at-Large to the Kern County Hospital Authority Board of Governors, replacing Gregory Bynum for the term expiring June 30, 2017. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we close this item, any final comments from Mr. Judd?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Just an update, with the transition continues to progress, the Board of Governors is active, they're engaged, we've had some very robust meetings, we're moving in the right direction, and Mr. Pelz will be a great addition to the board, so thank you.
Thanks, Judd. Any closing comments from supervisors? Any thoughts? Seeing none, that item is closed, and we'll move on to item number 79, request authorization for the Sheriff's Office to sell duty, no, excuse me, 78, sorry, 78, I mean the wrong one. Unusual travel request for Lieutenant James Morrison, Deputy Timothy Cochrane, Deputy Christopher Martin, and supervising aircraft mechanic Adam Valdez to attend ALEA Expo 2016 in Savannah, Georgia from July 17 through July 24, 2016, an amount not to exceed $16,888. Yes, sir. You're up.
Good morning, Chairman Gleason and fellow members of the board. My name's Laurie McCurtin, I'm commander of the Sheriff's Office Special Investigations Division. Before you for consideration this morning is the unusual travel request for Lieutenant James Morrison, Deputy Timothy Cochrane, Deputy Christopher Martin, and supervising aircraft mechanic Adam Valdez to attend the Airborne Law Enforcement Association Expo in Savannah, Georgia. It should be noted, all of those personnel are currently assigned to our air support unit. Lieutenant Morrison, Deputy Cochrane, Deputy Martin, and aircraft mechanic Valdez are scheduled to attend the ALEA Expo in Savannah, Georgia from July 17 through July 24. The Airborne Law Enforcement Association provides a series of guidelines and resources to enhance the safe operations of aviation units. These safety courses are necessary to ensure the safe operations, implementation, and management of the Sheriff's Office Aviation Fleet. This class is not held locally. Attendance at this class will require their absence for more than five working days and expenses to exceed $2,500 individually. The estimated total is $16,888. The county administrative procedure manual states that training which requires an employee to be absent for more than five working days or exceeds $2,500 in expenses must be approved by your board. Additionally, I'd like to add, the Sheriff's Office Air Support Unit personnel perform specialized functions involving different aircraft in a wide variety of different environments in our county. This course is necessary for the Sheriff's Office to evaluate and establish a robust safety management system to ensure safe operations of aircraft and related procedures. It is essential for all personnel to be familiar with the current safety practices and the airborne law enforcement community. Safe operations of the aircraft must be a priority at all levels due to the wide variety of specialized functions performed by personnel assigned to the air support unit. Lieutenant Morrison will be attending the Aviation Manager Course, and flight instructors, Deputy Cochrane and Deputy Martin, along with supervising aircraft mechanic Adam Valdez, will attend the Aviation Safety Officer Course. Additionally, the Airborne Law Enforcement Association provides our personnel the experiences, the contacts to talk to current and retired professionals that are specific to law enforcement aviation services. So based on that, it is recommended your board approve the unusual travel request for Lieutenant Morrison, Deputy Cochrane, Deputy Martin, and supervising aircraft mechanic Adam Valdez. That concludes my comments, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. McCurtin, we may, so why don't you grab a seat?
Yes, sir.
Let's open this up for public comment. Close public comment, and bring it back to the board.
Supervisor Scrivener. Thank you, sorry, I didn't punch you, oh, I guess I did. Mr. Nilon, I see that the county administrative office, you've reviewed and approved this request, is that correct?
Supervisor Scrivener, through the chair, we have, it is off consent because of the fact that we are in a budget crisis, and the board needs to see each and every one of these items, but we did concur.
Thank you, I'll move approval.
Second?
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Okay, we're about ready, we're going to adjourn to closed session, and we're going to withdraw number 81 on the closed session agenda. So we were adjourned.